Called to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, meeting for June the 4th. This time I would recognize Commissioner Milton Campbell for the invocation and Commissioner Josh Lael for the pledge of allegiance. Will stand.
Please stand.
Father, we thank you for this day. You blessed us with the beautiful sunshine, Lord, to go along with the recent rain. Lord, we ask you to guide us and lead us in our decisions. Lord, we ask you especially remember our students and teachers as they begin to close out another school year. Please be with our graduating seniors and touch them in their lives and keep them safe in the upcoming weeks as they so often travel after graduation. Lord, I ask you that protect our law enforcement emergency personnel and just put a protective hedge around them, keep them safe and bring them home, and give the comfort that their families need in their jobs that they partake of. Lord, guide us at least in our decisions that they are in the best interest of Alexander County and the citizens. In this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Principal Doug Roney, Alexander County Central High School. And if you would, sir, come up and Dr. Phil, if you would, got a little something for you. If you'll come over to the podium, sir, and we'll get you on the radio and on the TV.
Welcome, everyone, to our meeting tonight. It is a great honor to stand before you and to be able to do what I'm about to do. Several years ago, can't remember exactly how many now, it's been a few, I was part of the process that searched for a high school principal. And we looked low and high and had a lot of applicants. But a lot of people were applicants and we had a true candidate, Mr. Doug Roney. Phil, very comfortable in saying that over the years I worked with was a school principal, high school principal myself, worked with a lot, hired a few, and don't know that there's ever been a better one than Mr. Doug Roney. He's done an amazing job. He's done great things for our kids. He's done great things for our staff. He's been a vital member of our community. We love him. We think he's excellent. Think he's outstanding. We really appreciate what he's done for Alexander County. And it's a total honor to be able to present him this award tonight. And I'd like to read it to you. Says, "Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the county upon Doug Roney in recognition of his dedication, leadership, and immeasurable impact on the students and faculty of Alexander Central High School presented June 4th, 2018." And I would take that even a notch further, not only the students, but the parents and the community at large. Mr. Roney, you've had a tremendous impact. We're very excited for you, sad that you're leaving us, but happy for you and what the next move in your career means for you. Thank you.
Thank you, my friend.
Not very good at this. I just want to tell you, thank you for the honor. It is one of the highlights of my career, for sure. I've shared with many of you my thoughts over the last seven years. It's been a great run. It's been a great place to be. And in my 28-year career, it's been the best place I've ever been. And I've said that over and over and over. Lord opens and closes doors. And he's opened a door, an opportunity for me to take life and an opportunity career-wise to do something. Spent a little time over there today. And I kind of was sharing that instead of running 100 mile an hour every day, I'm going to back down and probably run about 50 miles an hour a day. And so in being in Alexander County and the principal of Alexander Central High School, you live in a bubble. You're in that bubble 365, 24/7, doesn't matter where you're at. And that's the beauty of the system we live in. I can't do the job that I've done, though, without thanking a lot of people. First and foremost, our Lord and Savior. Second is my wife. She has to understand the hours and commitment that goes into this. My children, you know, I've raised my kids in high school. They know that. They wanted to see Dad, they came to high school and they were part of it. Throughout the years, and two of them are here tonight, Jay and Andrea, and Brian obviously has family commitments tonight, but great assistant principals that have supported me, great central office people that have supported me as well, school boards that have supported decisions and changes that has happened over the course of the last seven years, and just a great faculty and staff that has bought into a lot of the things that we've been able to do, and students. I say this every time when I stand before them. We're so lucky to have the student body that we've got and blessed. And until you spend time in the school system and be a part of it, you don't realize how blessed we are to have had that. So, all of you that are here before me, we've had a working relationship. I'm not leaving the county. My son will finish out his two years here, and we'll see what leads from there for him. But we plan on making Alexander County our home and our retirement place as well. So, thank you. I can't thank you enough for this honor, and I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate what you've done for high school and for the county. And just a little token of our appreciation. Wish you good luck in everything you do, sir.
Chairman Reese, I'd like to say I was actually on school board when we hired Mr. Roney. And I go back to an interview session that we had, and he met with the school board. And, you know, walking into that, you know, you don't know, you know, Mr. Hope, who was superintendent at that time, had told us, "I found the best candidate for a high school principal in all of North Carolina." Typically, he was right when he would tell you something like that. And so, when we went in there that day, and I walked out, and I, there was probably, I've never felt so good about a fit for a person in a position because in a one-county high school, it is one of the, it may be the most focal position in our county above any and all other positions because you affect roughly 1,500 students and times two, parents, maybe times four, and grandparents. And I think the high school in and of itself is almost like a synergy. It affects so much of what goes on in our county. And I can attest to his commitment because I now live near the high school, so I'll walk my dogs at 6:30 in the morning, and I'll see Mr. Roney's truck there. And then I'll walk my dogs at 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock at night, and I see his truck there. And I think a special thank you to your family because, you know, they had to sacrifice time with you at home for your commitment to the school system. And you will be missed. I'd hoped that when we talked several years ago, you were going to retire here. You gave me a timeframe that really made me kind of envious of you. I thought, man, you young people in the school system can get out early. But I do wish you well. And I think a testament, it is a better place by your having been here. And I had one child that was a student when you were the principal, and he had the highest respect for you. And just the relationship you build with kids, you ask about if you see their parents, if you know, if you're a parent, somebody asks about your kid and remembers your child, that's just like the holy grail. So, thank you for what you've done. And I'm glad to hear you're going to continue to be a resident and taxpayer of Alexander County. But wish you and your family well, Mr. Roney.
Any other commissioner?
All right. I'd say again, I thank you for your, being in Alexander County, for what you've done. And I had a dog or two came through school. And boy, she really, you brought her around in a real good way. And she still has a lot of respect for you. And she wanted me to make sure that I told you tonight. So, I was about to forget about that. So, I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
I still have her gift, my old friend.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to our next item of business, be the commissioners' report. And I'd just like to say, I know this weekend everybody's heard, the Lady Cougars, another championship. And I just want to congratulate them and Darrell Atkins and the rest of his coaching staff on taking Alexander County statewide. And it's a good thing. Congratulate all the girls, all the ones involved in the tournament. Thank you.
Any other commissioner have something to talk?
Good.
All right. Everybody's quiet, so that's good. Moving on, our next item will be adoption of the agenda. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Being none. All in favor? Vote. Raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Item one will be public comment. Okay. All right. We'll move on to item number two, and I'd recognize LeAnn Weston, Alexander County Health Director.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I, it seems like this year rolls around really quickly. Annually, I bring you the State of the County's Health Report that we develop. And if you remember what that is, every four years, we do a large community health assessment. And so, in between years, in those interim years, Chad, you can, next slide, in the interim years, you, we do the State of the County's Health Report. It's a little more abbreviated where we just look at our priorities and what we're working on and see where we're making progress. And we look at any emerging issues and anything else that we feel like we need to address that's kind of come up in those interim years. So, and the full report is on our website at various locations around the county. So, this is an abbreviated presentation of that. So, if anybody wants the full report, our website, the county's website, at the libraries, county administrative building, and of course, at our office. And I can email it to anybody. So, but you can see the leading causes of death really hasn't changed. The 31% on the right side is cancer, followed by heart disease, respiratory disease, and Alzheimer's is up. Part of that's probably because we do have an aging community. And I'll talk a little bit about that again in a minute. And 6% is stroke. So, that's pretty stable. That's pretty much what we've been seeing. A refresher, remember our community priorities identified in 2014? Doesn't seem like that long ago we did this, but was healthy families. And under that is improving our heart disease and diabetes, obesity in adults and children. Lots of things fit under that that we've been working on. Substance abuse and mental health have kept those, in those top three for a long time. Emerging issues, there's a couple of things that have shown up that wasn't identified prior. The first one being diabetes. If you look at the graph, you see how our death rates associated with diabetes is on the increase. Again, semi-related to our aging population. Remember, we started a primary care program in the last year. So, we're hoping that really helps to identify diabetes earlier and get it controlled and reduce those outcomes that are really negative that go along with diabetes. We're planning more early screening and detection and certainly more education and outreach to let people know, you know, we need to screen. And now that we have the primary care program that is more affordable based on their income, maybe they can get those screenings whereas before, maybe they couldn't afford it. You have to choose between groceries and, you know, going to the doctor or gas to get the working back or a physical. The next one is Alzheimer's. Again, probably related to our aging community. It has dropped some, but I thought it was worth talking about just to say, you know, we don't feel like there's a lot we can do about it, but we certainly are monitoring it, educating, continuing to track this to see, to see those trends. And hopefully, they continue to decline. And now, for the best part, the finale is, we actually have been awarded two grants. The first grant, Community Health Grant, is a $150,000 grant for July through June 30th of this coming fiscal year to pay for those primary care visits particularly. Remember, we set our fee schedule to 40%. We wouldn't slide any lower than that because of the cost. You know, trying to be conservative with our budget and there's just not enough money to go around. This grant will now pay for those folks that are falling into that 40%. They will have no fee. It reimburses us for $100 for every visit. So, we have 1,500 visits we can provide in the next year. And most of the time, if you do a really good job with these grants, you can apply for the second year. And so, we're hoping it will continue. So, we're, I'm thrilled because we, I could tell you some heart-wrenching stories of those people that we have seen over the last six, eight months that we've had the program. Truly, we had one lady that hadn't been seen in 20 years. Fell into the 40% pay, was barely making it, and needed all kinds of medical interventions, but, you know, had to decide between paying other bills and coming and taking care of her health. So, now this grant will, she needed the second visit, but it had taken months to save up enough because we char, it's about $50 to come to that first visit, which is reasonable if you went to other, the primary care providers, but not if you're, you know, on a very, very limited budget. So, the folks that qualify for this grant are uninsured and low income. Those are the only two qualifications. We can see them for lab work, any, pretty much any services. It doesn't have to just be primary care. It can be adult health. It can be family, pretty much anything we do, we can use this grant to fund if they fall into the uninsured and meet the income threshold. So, we were, there were, we, 50% of the health departments that applied were funded. So, we felt very blessed that we were in that half that were funded. They only funded about a third of the applicants. So, the second is even more exciting, if you can get more exciting. You know, mental health has been an issue forever and ever, and there's just so much need within the health department. So, this Behavioral Health Grant is $175,000 to create a behavioral health program. Duke Endowment is who funded this one. And it is a two-year grant. This first year will be to build the program. Policy procedures get credentialed with, you know, everybody known to man, Medicaid, all the insurance companies. So, hopefully, this program will be like our dental program. We will build it from the ground up and then it will self-sustain. So, this grant will give us two years to fund it without having to use county money till we can sustain it with billing, insurance companies, and other payer sources. So, you know, we're not going to be able to handle everything, but definitely like our pregnant women that really need counseling and need some help right then, there, we will eliminate the barrier of transportation and waiting lists. And, you know, they'll, they'll come in for their prenatal visit, and then we'll, they'll go across the hall and see a counselor. So, we are very excited about, about both of these. We feel very blessed. And lastly, the report, the entire State of the County's report is available in all those sources. So, any questions?
One question about the Behavioral Health Unit. So, is it just going to be counseling or is it going to be a psychiatrist that actually prescribes medications? What's the end game there?
We, our intent is to use our mid-level providers for the medication side of it. And so, the counselor and the medical physician to, to work together. And we will have a supervising, we're hoping for psychiatrists, but depending on what we can find because that may be a difficult thing. I have a few fillers out. We, you know, dreaming, we dream early and start planning, but we will definitely have to have a supervising somebody. So, but the mid-level will actually prescribe. We already prescribe a fair amount, antidepressants, anti-anxieties, those kind of things. And we refer a lot to substance abuse treatment, but we don't see them going for that follow-up. You know, they're getting the medications, but then they don't keep appointments. They, you know, lots of excuses, lots of reasons, lots of barriers to not do that. So, we're hoping that by being in-house, a safe place, they're already coming, that we just enhance what we already do and make that be a nice fit.
But it's not going to be anything like schizophrenia or you're not going to be treating any of those?
No, no. We're really doing that lower level of the counseling, even with substance abuse. We'll refer out, but we may enhance what they're getting with more counseling on top of that. Domestic violence, abuse, some of those childhood traumas, some of that kind of work. No, the bipolar schizophrenia and all that will definitely need a higher level care. But if we could take part of that treatment in-house, then maybe there'd be more openings for, for those that needed to go to RHA and other providers. So...
LeAnn, having the pleasure of working with you sort of side-by-side in a lot of ways for many years, and then having the opportunity to work with you on, on the health board, I'd just like to say that we really appreciate the get-after-ness that you've put forth in things like these grants and other things that bring us much-needed resources. You have some great vision. And not only do you have vision, but you put feet under it and put the boots on the ground and make things happen. So, thank you for your aggression in acquiring things such as this.
Well, thank you. But I have a great staff. So, there's a lot of people behind me supporting that, too. So, lots of, it's a team effort. Thank you. Well, and I will tell you, a telehealth quick commercial. We have done four or five visits now, and it is going well. So, we finally got over those couple stumbling blocks. So, took, took a while till the end of the school year, but we're, I'm pleased to say it's becoming very successful. So...
All right. A good report, a lot of information there. And it lets us know kind of where we're at in the county. And I do appreciate you, your staff also, for the job you do for us. And great thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Okay, for item number three, I recognize Greg Kronk, our IT Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you for a few minutes this evening, give you a little update on some of our broadband efforts that we're undertaking in Alexander County. Some of you, hopefully all of you will remember us coming to you in January 8th of this year and talking about our broadband feasibility study that we spent last year working on with a company called Open Broadband. If you'll remember about that, that it, it was a study that helped take a comprehensive look at broadband in Alexander County. Who provided service? Where we provided service? Speeds, pricing, who didn't have service? We used some survey techniques to survey our citizens. We also did workshops, and we did a lot of field work to come up with, in essence, a local broadband market assessment. And that's what this is. It included a lot of different things. It included a lot of inventory assessment also. What fiber-optic assets were in our county, both county and privately owned. We found we had a lot more fiber in the county than we ever realized. We also found a lot of it was underutilized. So, from some of those carriers. We looked at vertical assets, towers, water tanks, buildings that can be used for wireless broadband. We looked at opportunities for providing last-mile services. And most importantly, that feasibility study provided this board with six broadband strategy recommendations for the county. I'll highlight those for you. The first, the county should be prepared to provide assistance in the form of access to county-owned infrastructure, towers, water tanks, fiber-optic infrastructure. Now, I might put a caveat on that, at no charge for the first period. You know, it could be two years or something. You could certainly charge at some point, but initially, the recommendation was let them on for, for no cost or minimum cost. Seed the competitive effort by, effort by offering the county's internet contract to an ISP in return for the ISP's commitment to provide service to the community. And we're certainly willing to do that. I've got sites that need internet. Rocky Face Park has very little internet. So, and Alicia's talked to me numerous times. We've certainly got facilities that we would love for another provider, some other providers to come in and see what they could offer us. Work with the state broadband office and other agencies to obtain grant funds for broadband infrastructures. We talked with Keith Conover. He's our broadband office representative. He has been, I think he's been to several of our meetings for the folks that were on the broadband committee and spoke to us at length. Develop an innovation center with high-speed internet access to promote small business, economic development. The fifth one is fund a pilot program to assist a new ISP to enter the market to provide broadband services. And we're going to hit that one in a minute. And then continue to work with our incumbent ISPs to encourage them to expand service offerings. So, let's talk about, we took that, that feasibility study and talked to some folks in-house and, and in the community and tried to come up with some goals that we could give you. And I think we gave that information to you at a prior meeting in a written form. I don't think we did a presentation on it. But I wanted to highlight a few of those things. If you look at the first three of these, it talks about Lenny's Mountain Tower. We own a communications tower, Lenny's Mountain, north of town, and we actually have fiber to that. If you look in the feasibility study, that was a highly desirable location because of the, what they say, "view shed." The, it sees, that tower can see a lot of the northern end of the county, that generally the areas that don't have a lot of high-speed broadband. So, they were real keen on that facility. However, there were a couple, a couple of things about that facility that limited us what we could do with it. One is what is the structural loading of that? We have equipment on it now. What can we put on it? So, we've went out and got us a structural engineer to take a look at that and make, and provide us with a study, of which they did. They've completed that. The second piece of that is, we did not own that property. We were leasing that from the state of North Carolina. And to be able to offer that to anyone else, we would have had to gone back to the state of North Carolina. And we saw that as an encumber of hunts upon doing anything with broadband in the future. So, I'm happy to report at your, at your meeting in May, you allocated some funds to purchase that property. We have since completed that, that property acquisition. The deed has been filed. It now belongs to Alexander County. So, we can make use of that tower and that, that site as we see fit. And finally, we're looking at, with regard to that facility, we're looking at some upgrades recommended by our engineer to be able to structurally support what broadband infrastructure we would like to place on it, as well as any additional infrastructure the county wishes to put on it in any time in the future. Would we want another microphone or microwave dish or communication antennas or whatever else we'd want. We're pursuing that in our next budget year, and we're, we're, we're not asking you for money for that tonight or anything, but we think we can find that funds in existing budgets. So, we're not going to ask for that. Most importantly, what we have done, and you remember the key ask, one of the key suggested strategies was to basically seed the pot, put money upfront to help a broadband provider get in the market. So, we have submitted a $50,000 ARC grant application. We submitted the pre-application. The pre-application has been approved. We will be submitting a application to them. I have a meeting later in the month to get a little more detail on it. I don't have a timeframe from you. I would think fall-ish, sometime in the fall, we would hear on that. I think our odds are very good that we'll get that, considering they funded portion of your feasibility study. I think that if we tie that back into our grant, they would be very, very willing to, to help us out with that. So, as you're aware, with ARC monies comes a match, unfortunately. So, I think your next budget item for this, or your next agenda item for this evening is about your budget. There is $50,000 in matching funds in that budget that you'll be talking and discussing later this evening. So, that would give you $100,000. That would be twice what the recommendation was in the feasibility study. So, hopefully, that can be used to do something very, very worthwhile. So, once we get the grant or, and get those funds available to us, what we will be doing is compiling an RFP and releasing that to broadband providers, you know, putting that up and seeing, seeing who we can get to solicit to come into the county to offer some new services, you know, to help them get in the county and get going. I would love to tell you it would be wired, wired providers, but $100,000 ain't going to, isn't going to help us with that. us with that. You know, I would be up here asking for $100 million to wire the county, to provide fiber optic, you know, to every home in this county or something, something in that neighborhood. I mean, that's tough to come to this board and ask for that, I don't, you know, I don't even think our county can do that. I think what we're talking about is more wireless providers, and when I say wireless broadband providers, I mean, you know, 25 meg down speeds and up, on up into gig, you can get gig on that, some of that infrastructure, so I mean, it's reasonably fast. That's the low-hanging fruit, and the most cost-effective at the moment to probably get in that, get somebody in here quickly, get that up and running, and we certainly want to pursue other things in the future, that wouldn't be the end-all, to be-all, so. We would continue to work with our current and potential broadband service providers. We talk with Keith Conover at the state quite often, he gives us leads, companies that are talking about doing this or that, I don't have anything definite, there's always a lot of talk in broadband, and obviously, we're going to continue to work to identify potential sources of revenue, to promote broadband and find additional broadband for the counties. We continue to monitor state and federal changes to broadband. I think as a general rule, there are a lot of rural counties that have been left out of a lot of broadband infrastructure. I would love to see that change and some more emphasis at the federal and state, you know, towards that, to push that, to help out some of these rural folks that don't have anything, so. Beyond that, I don't have anything else for you this evening, I would be happy to answer any of your questions, I hope, that you might have.
Greg, I don't certainly claim to understand how all this works, but kind of have a concept, just like a model, you go from point to point, and everywhere, the wireless at some point goes to a wire or cable or something, right? So, if you've got a tower just on the top of Barrett's Mountain, just, I don't know that you do or you don't, or that we will or we won't, but does that tower have to have a fiber line run to it to make it functional, to beam the signal out to wherever it's going to go to?
You have to have some sort of backhaul, and we identified in that feasibility study all the towers in the county with backhauls, that were fed by fiber, and traditionally, you want fiber. Now, your Lenny's Mountain Tower, it does have fiber, the county owns it, we laid fiber to that sometime years ago. Now, if you want, that's why they were so high on that in this study, because, one, the county owned it, and they identified that, that there wouldn't be a huge cost on that, as opposed to going out to a cell tower or something like that and trying to leave space. Something like a Barrett's Mountain, we use what's called microwave, it's a licensed spectrum microwave from Lenny to Barrett. We don't actually have fiber to that, I don't know if there's any fiber to that tower or not, I'm not sure, but if you wanted to locate some sort of wireless equipment, say on that facility, you would need to bring that back to another tower that does have the fibers.
So, wherever we have a tower, whether, you know, I said Barrett's Mountain.
Certainly, yeah, yeah.
Wherever we would have one, it's wired.
Yeah, now, we have also access to a Viper Tower on Fox Mountain, too, that has a microwave back to Barrett's.
I think what you're asking is, can you locate equipment on Barrett's Mountain, and you've got line of sight, you're, you know, your last mile, you're actually going to the homes or businesses from Barrett's Mountain, the signal comes back, can you beam that signal to Lenny's Mountain where you actually have fiber at? You can do that.
Most definitely.
So, as long as you've got somewhere you can beam the signal to that has fiber, it's my understanding that you can.
You can, and again, that wouldn't be really up to myself or my staff to engineer. We would release an RFP and say, what can you do for us? What can you do for Alexander County? And then hopefully, you would get numerous responses that say, well, if you'd let us here, you let us here, we can cover this, we can cover that, and it would be up to them to engineer their own equipment.
Exactly, if I'm not mistaken, I think the gentleman said that pretty much about a five-square mile or circular mile radius from a tower.
Correct.
So, if those are, in those five-mile distributions across the county, somewhere there's got to be some fiber run, is what I'm getting to.
Ultimately, you must come back to some sort of infrastructure to carry that, and most often, it's fiber. Now, if you put up, if the county were to seed that pot, and they identified, well, we want on Lenny's, and we want on the water tank at the fairgrounds, for instance, or we wanted, you know, we have some other towers or water tanks in the county, or other tall buildings, you know, they could bring that signal back to a central point, like Lenny's or Barrett's, or something like that, so.
Thanks.
Certainly.
Exciting project.
I'm excited, you know, my vision, I would love to have the vision that we're going to run fiber to every home. I think that at some point, that becomes a reality as technology progresses. It, I don't have a timeframe, I would love to find a partner, and I think that's what it'll take, it'll take a private partner that wants to be in this county, and it may take us finding some federal and state monies for them to get them started, and we continue to work on that. I mean, it's not like that we'd give up on that, or we don't want that, but it takes a lot to get there.
How much more, or how much faster is, you know, say I've got fiber coming to my house versus wireless signal to my house?
Theoretically, the bandwidth.
Faster, or how much information?
It all comes down to the equipment on the end, but theoretically, fiber has no speed limit. I mean, you know, the speed of light, they get into, it travels at the speed of light, but then they start breaking down the spectrums of the light, and that every spectrum can be a channel, and light can be divided in infinite amount of times, so as provided you've got the equipment on the end that can understand it, I mean, fiber is ultimately limitless as to what it can carry.
So, it's just a matter of what your carrier wants to provide you with, basically?
Yeah, I mean, yes, yes, but it comes back to that equipment on the end, the actual physical media of fiber is the ultimate, but obviously, it comes down to what the equipment issue you have on the end can do.
Good report, appreciate the information, though it's been an ongoing thing for a few years, so, looks like we're getting the spine, I would say, probably of it, and getting ready to branch out from there, so, I appreciate all your work on it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next thing, I just wanted to mention one thing. One of the recommendations we need to go back and look at, the county commissioners do, it's about the innovation center with the high-speed internet service to promote small business economic development, so that's kind of not in their sphere of things, so it's something that we need to look at along with EDC.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayberry. We'll check in on that, too, and re-bring some updates on what Mr. Mayberry has mentioned here, and moving on to item number four, adopting our Alexander County Budget Ordinance, I'd recognize Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the 2018-2019 Budget Ordinance for Alexander County. The General Fund budget is $41,200,000. In the budget ordinance, it contains all the funds from the Fire District Fund for all the fire departments, revow funds, solid waste funds, and landfill closure funds, county water, Bethlehem water, and Bethlehem sewer, school improvements, emergency telephone, and so on, but identifies all those funds that make our ordinance. In the County General Fund, which is the fund we've talked about the most by far, the larger department budgets, just to highlight a few, are social services, schools, emergency services, Sheriff's Department, detention, and Health Department. Those are the larger departments by the budget size, as you are well aware. Also, would like to say that there, of course, there's no change in the tax rate this year, the collection rate is at 96 percent, there's no change in any of the various fire tax districts, all their rates stay the same. Water rates will be, C of Hickory is recommending a 2.1 percent increase in water rates, sewer rates will not increase. We can hold water tap fees for another year, and I would like for us to do that, consider doing that in conjunction with also with our water project that we have that will be starting soon, and coordinate those water tap fees with that water project, that'll help us add more water customers. We currently have over 5,100 water customers, and that's a very good thing. We currently have 299 sewer customers, but as we're all aware, the Bethlehem Sewer Project, once it gets started, that number will increase drastically, so, wanted to say something about those items. Those are just general comments with the ordinance, I don't know if we want to get any detail at this time, but I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, or if anybody else has any comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. French. As you mentioned, too, I think touching on some of the things, you know, 41, too, you know, we're up just a little bit from last year, but we're still toe in the line pretty good. I'll just kind of make mention for the school appropriation, the total now is 6.520, and we've added 488, 950 in additional funding, and there's also a $90,000 grant match for the Stony Point Elementary School Sewer Project, is not included in that either. And for the Sheriff's Office, the new total's 3.1, or 204,000 roughly in additional funding. EMS is about 147,000 in additional, detention, additional 196,000. The DSS budget, pretty much fully funded, but only about 58,000 of local additional dollars, so, you know, we always have budgets that we have to work in, and I think as the county, you can go back and look, we've kind of been coming in under budget with the taxpayer money for the past few years, and, you know, that's a good thing. Has enabled us to, you know, fund a few things at additional cost, maybe not what everybody's wanting, but, you know, we were able to, you know, add some monies in places. Any commissioner have a comment?
Yeah, and I thought, you know, as we went through this budget process, I decided to go back and look at 2014 audit, and the most reason why we have 2017, we'll have 2018, will probably not come until September or October, and just kind of looked at the line items where we've invested a little bit more, and it's been in education, and emergency services, public safety. We also, we have seen about a $359,000 decline in general government expenses over the same period, but the net increase from '14 through '17, again, I know we're not talking about '17 now, but that's the last altered information we've got, is about a $1.37 million increase, which is over a three-year period. And to your point, I think historically, we've budgeted revenues conservatively, and have done a little bit better on revenues, and been pretty aggressive on the budget of expenses, and typically have come in under the budgeted amount. As I mentioned to you, Chairman Reese and the others here, this doesn't include a COLA adjustment, and I think I voiced my opinion on that, I'm not against the funds being appropriated to the departments, I just fundamentally don't believe that that's how you disperse those funds, that you give those monies, you allocate them to the departments, and the supervisors determine how to do that, and so, I will vote against the budget on that principle only. I don't think it's a bad budget, but that's just against my principles, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. French, I've got one question. When was the last year that the school system received $5 million from Alexander County? Was it 2014?
2014, $5,250.
Yeah.
But right before, okay, it's $5,250, so, okay. So, we've went up, I don't know, about 30 percent, nearly a third, close to a third. We've increased the budget of the Alexander County School System nearly a third in how many ever years, so, that's been a big increase.
Commissioner Mayberry, in 2012, 2013, the appropriation was $5 million, '13, '14, it went to $5,250 and so on, so it's increased.
So, it's went up a third since then?
Yes.
And the majority of that 250,000 was assistance with, assistance with debt created by the construction of the Alexander Central Auditorium, and that portion of that 5.25 million from Alexander County was not all general fund.
Now, what was the payment on that? It was 150,000?
Yeah.
$150,000 a year.
Which ended last?
Yes.
Last year?
Yes.
Because the county had fulfilled, county fulfilled its original agreement in helping pay for that last year.
That's right.
So, that, and Mr. French, if I'm not mistaken, too, the tax increase of a few years ago, while was not a very excited or exciting proposition, that as well generated a considerable amount of school system revenues, also, correct, through low wealth funding?
Through low wealth funding, yes. $800,000, is that correct, Millie?
That's the number that I've heard from time to time, I don't know that I can confirm that, but it's going to be about a $2.2 million increase when you take in the county allocation. Chairman Reese, I will say, and I think I've stated this, too, is, I think I did at the last meeting, I think we've gotten about to the point from expenditures, the rubber band is about as tight as it's going to get, that there are sources of revenue, although hopefully, they gradually move up, but I don't think you're going to see any dramatic changes in the revenue stream over the next couple of years, so I think, and again, I'll be gone, but it's going to be very important to kind of not raise this spending much more than where it presently is. That's, now, that's my personal opinion, and would love to be proved wrong with a lot more revenue, but.
Well, and people don't realize that state and federal regulations and laws also add to what you have to spend. We're having four positions in DSS to comply with certain state laws there that we have to comply with, so.
And one in general administration also.
Yes. Social Juggling Act.
There's a lot more than what you just see up front, you know, government wheels, I've said before, turn real slow, and sometimes they're just almost stopped, and with the things that's going to be added to what we got to do, you know, it's going to delay and create more monies, probably additionally to any project that's being done, so, we'll wait and see what happens. Any other comments? Okay, being no initial comments, I guess we need to make an adoption.
Yes.
I'd entertain, I'd do this as a motion to adopt our Budget Ordinance. I need a second.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none, I'd entertain a vote of approval. Everyone in favor, raise a right hand. Okay. All opposed? Okay, 3-2, motion carries. Moving on to item number five, recognize our County Manager, Rick French, once again for Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 56 through 60.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number 56 is to... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, budget amendment number 56 is to increase the public buildings' budget for security upgrades at the CBCC Alexander Center and the Alexander Applied Technologies Building. Uh, budget amendment number 57 is to budget for grant funding from NC Department of Environmental Quality Water Resources. The original grant plan was for payment to the Alexander County Soil and Water Conservation District with the funds to be forwarded to Resource Institute, Inc., for a stream restoration project. During the course of the grant, the state requirements changed to make the check, check payable to the county with the funding forwarded to the Soil and Wat- Cons- Soil and Water Conservation District. This budget amendment will allow for the grant transaction to be reported on the county general ledger as required. Budget amendment number 58 is to increase the Bethlehem Sewer Fund annual budget for the cost of engineering contract, design, permitting, bidding, and construction phase services for the Bethlehem Sewer Collection System, uh, extension and pump, pump station upgrade. Uh, total cost of the engineering contract is $654,050, with the work beginning in June 2018 and continuing into the new budget year, uh, 2018, 19. Another budget amendment will be needed in fiscal year 2019 for the Bethlehem Sewer Fund for this, for the amount of the contract that is not completed by June 30th. The new sales tax that can be used for economic development, public education, and community college began in fiscal year 2017. The county general fund, uh, transfer to the Bethlehem Sewer Fund is being taken from the new sales tax that was received in fiscal year 2018. Uh, budget amendment number 59 is to increase the Bethlehem Sewer Fund annual budget for the cost of engineering, uh, contract, uh, preliminary feasibility analysis for a wastewater treatment facility. Total cost of engineering contract is $50,023, with the work beginning in June 2018 and continuing into the new budget year, 2018, 2019. Another budget amendment will be needed in fiscal year 2019 for the Bethlehem Sewer Fund for the amount of the contract that is not completed by June 30th. The new sales tax that can be used for economic development, public education, and community college began in fiscal year 2017. The county general fund, uh, transfer to the Bethlehem Sewer Fund is being taken from the new sales tax that was received in fiscal year 2018. And to adjust number, uh, budget amendment number 60, to adjust the Bethlehem Water Fund annual budget for the cost of engineering contract, uh, preliminary feasibility analysis for a water treatment facility. Total cost of the engineering contract is $55,351, with the work beginning in, in June 2018 and continuing into the new budget year, 2018, 2019. Another budget amendment will be needed in fiscal year 2019 for the Bethlehem Water Fund for the amount of the contract that is not completed by June 30th. And those are the budget amendments. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. French. Uh, also, I think, uh, number 56, you know, is a good thing for, you know, it talks here about the added security, and that'll be upgrading for this building.
And the Applied Technology Building, yes.
And the Applied Technology. All right, thank you. Any other questions? If there's not, I'd entertain a motion to approve budget ordinances, number 56 through number 60.
Make a motion to approve budget amendments as presented.
Have a second?
Sir.
Okay, have a second. Any other discussion? Being none, I'd entertain a motion to approve with a raise of the right hand for approval. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number six, uh, recognize our county manager, Rick French, once again for the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, uh, to mention. One, uh, we've received a letter of intent to fund for the Stony Point Elementary School Wastewater Project. Uh, our project is eligible to receive a grant of $894,750. Uh, the grant is contingent on Alexander County, meeting all milestones as outlined in the letter that's in your packet. Um, the milestone to execute construction contracts is May 10, 2020. Um, we start out with, there's two workshops that we're required to attend. Uh, one is on June 6, the other on June 7, and we'll be attending those. Um, and if you'll look at, uh, in your packet, you'll have the dates, some of the milestone dates for the sewer, for that sewer project. Um, and that's part of this, uh, new compliance, um, things that we're getting into. Um, also, seven Alexander County volunteer fire departments receive state grant funds totaling $90,853.30. Uh, congratulations to those fire departments. They've done a great job. Um, and that information is also in your packet. Um, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman. I, I have some, a couple of things for closed session, though it won't take just a few minutes.
All right, thank you, Mr. French. Anyone have a comment, question? A lot of good information. At this time, I move on to our consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your motion, we approve the consent agenda as shown.
All right, have a, have a motion, have a second. All in favor of consent agenda, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. At this time, um, we'll go into closed session per NCGS 143, 1318 dot 11, at 4, 5, and 6 for economic development, contractual, and personnel. I have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Okay, a motion, have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand. Uh, we'll reconvene only for the purpose of adjourning. Thanks.